Good morning, everyone. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation, it will be given this morning by Pastor Glenn Barnhill of the Solid Rock Church of God on Tanner Williams Road. And Pastor Barnhill is Commissioner Dewitt, pastor.
He's my backup pastor.
Backup?
And my father's childhood best friend. They've been best friends for, I won't tell their age, but a long time.
We're welcome, pastor. We're happy to have you here today. And please remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's an honor to be here, be with our commissioners, and it's an honor to be able to open a meeting of this nature and ask the Lord to be invited into our affairs, the affairs of man. Let's pray together. Father, we come to you, Lord, and we are thankful. We are humbly thankful and grateful for the fact that you're still God, you're still able to be a part of what is taking place. We thank you, Lord, for our commissioners. We thank you for Commissioner Ludgood. We thank you for Commissioner Hudson. We thank you, Lord, for Commissioner Dewitt. We know, God, that they have been appointed, elected, but also appointed by you. All the affairs of man are guided and directed by you. We thank you for that. We ask you, Lord, today, to allow them to conduct this meeting with the ability and the wisdom that's given to them by you. We know, Lord, that when all things are said and done, that you're still present, you're still here. We also, God, are so grateful that we're in a county that we are able to have the freedom to come and go. And, Lord, we just ask today that you will govern these things that we are here to handle. We ask you, Lord, that you'll do this by the power and the authority invested in these commissioners, given to them by you, elected by you, put there by you. They are your ambassadors. And we just ask now, God, that you give them the wisdom to do what we're here to do in Jesus' name.
Thank you, President, to the flag of the United States of America and in this republic, holy and holy, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Again, thank you, Pastor Barnhill. We appreciate your being here with us this morning. Okay. Today, we have several resolutions to present. The first one is in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We have joining us Lori Roland from the Rape Crisis Center. She's the program coordinator and victim advocate. And I think she has some additional guests with her. If all the guests will come down. And Lori, I'm going to let you introduce them as we present the resolution.
Good morning. In observance of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2023, and after this is going to be SAM. The Mobile County Commission proclaims the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Mobile County. And whereas SAM calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the community, we applaud the efforts of the Rape Crisis Center of Mobile for providing a compassionate presence and listening ear to victims. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center, a program of Lifeline's Family Counseling Center, has provided comfort and support to sexual assault victims in this community for years, bringing awareness and education to the masses while offering high-quality assistance to those in need. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center provides 24-hour support to sexual assault victims and their families through direct services, prevention, education, and professional training to all residents of Mobile County. And whereas the Rape Crisis Center serves a cross-section of people of various races, socioeconomic, and educational levels, in 2022, the center provided 473 crisis phone calls, 146 hospital calls, office visits, follow-up victim support calls, court advocacy, family friend support, clothing bank, dolls and bears given to child victims, transportation, information, and referrals to community agencies. And whereas in awareness of SAM, the Rape Crisis Center will have an exhibit on display in the atrium of Mobile Government Plaza. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that we commend the Rape Crisis Center for the services it provides to the community. Furthermore, the Mobile County Commission joins advocates in communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. Also, we remind residents that each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future, and is signed by all three commissioners and witnessed by our administration.
Thank you all very much. We have almost our entire outreach and education and rape crisis team here, so I would like to introduce everyone. And then Katrina Kennedy is going to say just a few words. We have Katrina Kennedy. She's one of our victim advocates. We have Tyra Riley. We have Ashley Rocker. We have Latrina Thomas. And we have Kelsey Bryant. And they are all part of the outreach and education team. They are also part of the EHE initiative, which stands for Ending the HIV Epidemic. Next to her, we have Grace Williams. And then Commissioner. So this is your outreach and education and rape crisis and EHE team for Mobile. Katrina?
So on behalf of Lifeline's Counseling Services, the Rape Crisis Center, a division of Lifeline's Counseling Services, to all of the residents and community members that we serve, we would like to thank you, Commissioner Ludgood, your constituents, and all of the city of Mobile for giving us this opportunity to receive this honor. It is indeed a pleasure and an honor. Thank you. So Commissioner Ludgood has given me the opportunity to let you know what you all can do to assist us. We are in need of volunteers. We have no necessarily age restrictions from 18 up until 99. We would love to have you all to come out. We could give you information on how you can volunteer in the community. We are needing hospital advocacy, court advocacy, clothing closet. When we're getting ready for our Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we have different events coming up, and we would love, love, love to have you all to come out and support us. Thank you.
we have Danielle Schmidt of the Gulf Coast Family Center. And she has her team with her today as well. Oh. Hey, good morning. Thank you for joining us this morning. I have you here. Thank you for joining us. Both sides here. Good morning. Thank you, ladies, for joining us this morning. This resolution is presented in observance of National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, April of 2023. Whereas the Mobile County Commission proclaims April 2023 as National Child Abuse and Awareness Month in Mobile County. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. Whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas child abuse prevention programs succeed effectively because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas our society has a responsibility to protect our children and help them thrive in a safe environment, every child is entitled to be loved and cared for, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission acknowledges that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families. Furthermore, we urge all citizens to recognize National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Danielle, would you introduce your team?
I'm Danielle Schmidt. We have representatives here from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Health Department, Children's Trust Fund. Because child abuse isn't a single problem that any one agency can fix. This is a county problem, a state problem, and a national problem. And the way we truly begin to rectify this is by working together as a community, not only identifying it, but putting the services in place. Everything from mentors to the Health Department is involved in this, and that is how we begin to beat this epidemic that we're facing. Just in Mobile County alone, last year, they had over 2,500 reports of child abuse and neglect, and that led to over 200 children being placed in out-of-home care. That doesn't even begin to capture the number of safety plans that are put into place and services through the community. So we appreciate the commissioners allowing us to be here. April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, and we'll all be wearing blue to show our support, so we would invite you to do that. Tag us on social media. And you can visit any of our Facebook pages to learn more information about anything that you can do to volunteer, help, or participate.
Danielle. Yes, we're going to take the picture. Thank you all so much. We appreciate you and the work that you do in our community. Okay. And last, but certainly not least, we are recognizing our retirees for the month of April. And we have, let's see. We have three to recognize today. I think we have one in attendance, but with these three, they represent 108 years of experience in the county government. Wow. But that deserves an applause. And joining us this morning, we have Cedric Hudson, who has 38 years and seven months of service. And he is a voting machine tech. And also, we are recognizing Sandra Trimble. Sandra's not with us this morning, but she has 39 years and five months of experience with the county, is a reporting secretary for the County Commission. And we have Edward Blackwell Jr. with 30 years and two months, who is with the Sheriff's Department. And this morning, Cedric, we welcome you. We are so happy to have you here today, to let you know how very much we appreciate you and your service in working with the county and for the citizens that you have served so diligently all these years. And we'll miss you here, but we know that you always have a family with Mobile County, and I hope you know that. And so, in recognition of your retirement, we have a certificate that is presented to you, and we wish to express our sincere thanks and gratitude for your 38 years and seven months of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. And we have a pen.
No one has signed up to address the commission today, ma'am.
Thank you. I noticed that we have with us this morning, I see with our EMA, we have Ronnie Perro and Mike Evans. I mean, Ronnie Adair, I'm sorry. Ronnie Adair and Mike Evans. Nice to have you here today. Also, we have our district attorney, who's joining us today with members of his team, Keith Blackwell. Very nice to have you. Okay. Did I miss anybody else? Oh, Sheriff. Sorry, you're up there, I can't see. Sheriff Paul Birch, we're happy to have you here this morning as well. Thank you for joining us. We're ready to go, Glenn.
Okay, Commissioners. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meetings of the February 27, 2023, and March 13, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing, so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
So moved. Oh, wait a minute. Did we have this one at the conference or the other one?
Yeah, the number four.
We need to have this one today.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
What's that?
I think we need to have this public hearing. We had number four at the conference.
Right. This public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this matter? There being none, the public hearing is now closed.
Number four was, hearing was held at the conference. Number five, adopt a substantial amendment to Program Year 2019, 2021, 2022 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs following the comment period and public hearing held on March 23, 2023.
So moved.
Number six, approve a customer service agreement with Logico Computer Solutions, Inc., for one-year term with automatic month-to-month renewal, beginning April 1, 2023, for a monthly fee of $4,522. For advanced security management and purchase of AI endpoint security with EDR, ProStrike software for probate court.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of probate court to dispose of certain items from fixed assets, inventory list declares as surplus property, and donate Vic Brownstick pins that were returned from the precincts after November 2022 election to local school systems.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve requests of probate court to transfer PPE disinfecting items previously purchased for use in election to the metro jail for use ahead of expiration dates.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, reject all bids for Salt Air Preserve Office Building bid exceeded the budgeted amount.
So moved.
Second.
Ten award bid to Gordon and Zachary, Inc., for Mobile Government Plaza bi-fold door replacement, for a total bid in the amount of $250,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, authorize advertising and receiving bids for 2023 elevator maintenance and service for Mobile County facilities at various locations.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, reject all bids for safety upgrades at Camp One Building. Bids exceeded the budgeted amount.
So moved.
Second.
13, approve amending change order number two with Questica LTD to increase consulting teams' hours for extended support of up to additional 140 hours at an additional cost to the County Commission. At no additional cost to the County Commission, hours exceeded 140 hours will be charged based on time and materials.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Number 14, approve appropriation contract with Women's Club of Satsuma, an amount of $15,000 from District One funds to complete Phase Two of the Union Chapel replica.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve appropriation contract with Tanner Williams Elementary Parent Teacher Organization, amount of $7,442.24, from District Two funds for technology equipment and carpet for the collaboration lab at Tanner Williams Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
16, approve sponsorship agreement with Board of School Commissioners, Mobile County, in amount of $2,000 from District Two funds for Vex World Robotics Championships from Denton Magnet School of Technology.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve appropriation contract with Sims Elementary Parent Teacher Organization, amount of $20,000 from District Two funds to revitalize the Eagles Nest outside learning area at Sims Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve appropriation contract with Nan Gray Davis Parent Teachers Organization, in amount of $16,454.25, from District Three funds to purchase flexible furniture for the Professional Development Learning Lab at Nan Gray Davis Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
19, approve contract with Mott McDonald, Alabama LLC to provide professional engineering services for Ayula Battery Collection System lift station upgrades.
So moved.
Number 20, approve acceptance of a grant award and sub-reception agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the redevelopment Ayula Battery City Docs projects, any amount of $30,511,522, with no local match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
So moved.
Second.
21, approve acceptance of a grant award and sub-reception agreement from Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project Phase One and Phase Two, in amount of $3,856,137, with no match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
So moved.
Second.
22, approve a contract amendment, number two, with Mott McDonald, Alabama LLC to provide bidding and construction and engineering inspection services, Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project.
So moved.
Second.
23, authorize advertising and receiving bids, Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project.
So moved.
Second.
24, approve requests from the Alabama Cooperative Extension Service to waive fees for the John Archer Arena for a new 4-H archery club to practice on the following date. There will be no cost for preparation for the county.
So moved.
Second.
25, approve amendment to the home agreement with Legacy Trail LP regarding development of 56 units of senior housing in conjunction with Alabama Housing Finance Authority tax credits to extend the term for substantial construction completion from March 31, 2023, until May 31, 2023.
So moved.
26, authorize, adopt, and submit the 2021 Home ARPA allocation plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
27, 27 has a cost change. Agenda Shari, approve change order number one to Statement of Work Order Number Three, dated November 14, 2022, for Contract for Light Solutions LLC. The change order adds support for payroll reporting, HCM framework, retired benefits, and motor vehicle records. This change order will increase the total cost by $51,060.
So moved.
Second.
28, approve a professional service contract with Hurstick and Webster Creative Professionals to create a set of 12 marks for the various assets of the Mobile County Park System to be paid from Chickasaw Park budget.
So moved.
Second.
29, approve professional services contract with Stokes Consulting Firm, LLC, to provide project management, the master planning of the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, approve contract with Family Counseling Center of Mobile, Inc., doing business as Lifeline's Counseling Services, in amount of $150,000 from District One funds to benefit Faith in Action Alabama Mobile Hub Anti-Gun Violence Initiative.
So moved.
Second.
31, approve contract amendment number eight to the Mobile County Park Initiative contract with Mott McDonald, Alabama LLC, dated June 25, 2021, to add Task Number Nine, bidding and construction engineering inspection services for Escataba Hollow Park and campground improvements, Phase One B.
So moved.
32, approve agreement with Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for Alabama Community Broadband Technical Assistance Program, and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents associated with this agreement. There is no funding associated with this agreement.
So moved.
Second.
33, consider taking the following action on bids. And Commissioners, on bid 15-23, which is on page seven, there is a word change. And that word, it shows award, award, it should be reject. That's the only change.
Okay.
Why are we rejecting that bid price? Aluminum street light poles and various accessories.
Does it exceed?
They wouldn't hold the price for six months, so we're going to have to redo it for three months. The original bid was for six months.
So moved.
Say that again, Ricky. I didn't get it.
The bid was for six months, and they wouldn't hold the price for six months, so we're having to redo it for three months.
34, approve renewal of a termite barn for Alabama Cooperative Extension Office, 1070 Schillinger's Road North, Mobile, Alabama, from Terminex Commercial, for the amount of $549 per year.
So moved.
Second.
35, approve renewal of termite inspection for Grand Bay Library, 10329 Freeland Avenue, Grand Bay, Alabama, from Knox Pest Control, for an amount of $250 per year.
So moved.
Second.
36, excuse me.
Why is this just inspection and not the barn? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Commissioner, I believe that's just the annual inspection they do, and then it'd be followed up with the treatment if they found anything.
We can talk about it later. Thank you, though.
36, approve renewal of termite barn for Mobile County Soccer Complex, 3701 Hallsmule Road, Mobile, Alabama, from BB's Pest and Termite Control, in amount of $3,500 per year.
So moved.
Second.
37, approve amendment to lease agreement with William Scotsman, Inc., doing business as Will Scott, to modify rental term and rate for location at 18250 Doffn Island Parkway Code Den, Alabama, as follows.
So moved. Let me ask Tina a question real quick before we move on on that. These are the trailers at Cedar Point.
Yes, sir.
When are the permanent trailers? Have they give us an indication of when they're going to be finished?
Within the next three months. Actually, this is the lease for the bathroom, the restroom trailer is being extended. We're buying the existing office trailer used. And then, within the next two months, we hope to have delivery. So the delivery of the bathroom- So the, the delivery of the bathroom trailer that we're purchasing has just been delayed.
So we're gonna purchase the office trailer that's currently there in addition to another trailer that we, they're building?
Yes, they're, they're working on our restroom trailer right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thirty-eight, adopt the sole source resolution approving renewal of software maintenance contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. for ARC GIS services in the amount of $34,511.92.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-nine, approve a professional services contract with MCG Business Solutions to provide assistance in migrating email services to cloud hosting services in the amount of $33,480 for the County Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Forty, approve sponsorship agreement with Bay Area Women's Coalition, Inc. in the amount of $1,000 from District One funds for its Team Up to Clean Up campaign.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-one, approve appropriation contract with Floretta P. Carson Visual and Performing Arts Academy in the amount of $40,500 from District One funds for its Summer Performing Arts Institute.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-two, approve sponsorship agreement with the PAC Players Doing Business as PAC Theater Company Foundation in the total amount of $2,000 to be divided as follows for its Summer Camp Scholarships.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-three, approve amendment to the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act. Strategic Spending Plan approved, August 1, 2022, to reduce funding awarded to Commonwealth National Bank, any amount of $860,000 for the Economic Development Program, and award funding to the following. Mobile County Commission is amending the strategic spending plan to revise the project, excuse me, project awarded to Commonwealth National Bank for economic development programs for small businesses, and award to other entities accomplishing the same goal. The intended outcome of the project has not been changed.
So moved.
Second.
Number forty-four, adopt the new emergency operation plan for the Mobile County as recommended by the Mobile County Emergency Management Agency, and authorize the Commission President to sign the pro, oh, excuse me. Prom, promulgation page of the EOP. And Ronnie Adair and Mike Evans are here. If you have any questions.
Did you guys have anything to say, or?
Yes, sir. I'll just give you a quick bottom line of, um, because of the way our government works, DHS and FEMA, to get any kind of support from them, whether it's grants, help with training, post-disaster recovery efforts, we have to have a plan in place every five years. And so, basically, this plan was updated, and the biggest so what about it is we, we did a real, a big upgrade about 10 years ago. The last one, five years ago, was kind of some minor changes. But as we all know, FEMA likes to make policy procedure changes. They like to change how they come into your community and judge you as far as what they'll do to help you. Well, they had done a lot of updates with terminology and some changes, so we wanted to make sure that our plan had all of those updates and terminology. So, the next time we have a disaster, FEMA shows up to help, we're gonna get the help needed. So, we actually did use Hagerty Consulting to help us do the update, which y'all have a disaster contract with them, and that's Brock Long's company, so they helped us get the plan together. So, we got rid of some redundancies, we reduced the size of the plan, but we got some new FEMA concepts, terms in there that need to be in there just in order that we don't lose any of them if we have another disaster.
Thank you, guys, for your work on this, and thank you for being here today. So moved. Second. Second.
Forty-five, approve preliminary and final plat of addition to Falcon Point subdivision and preliminary and final plat, resub of Lot Three, Howard Road Property Subdivision and preliminary and final plat, a resubdivision of Heritage Auto Subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-five, approve the disadvantaged business enterprise plan for Jeremiah A. Denton Airport in accord with the Federal Aviation Administration and the U.S. Department of Transportation, 49 CFR Part 26.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-seven, accept report from the county engineer pertaining to the petition of, for private road, dirt road maintenance for Deborah Lane and Roger Road in accord with Act 2019-307. Petition as submitted is complete and did not meet the criteria for consideration. These private roads are located within Mission District Three.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-eight, approve purchase of one seat of Carson Civil Suite Software from Carson Equipment and Software, LLC, in the amount of $3,0871 for the Engineering and Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Forty-nine, approve annual software maintenance agreement renewal with Bentley Systems Incorporated in the estimated amount of $4,131 from February 14, 2023 to February 13, 2024 for the Engineering and Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
350, approve reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way with Alabama Power Company for Monroe Lane Grade Drain Base and Pave. This work will be performed by the Alabama Par, prior to construction. Estimated cost to Mobile County is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-one, approve agreement for relocation of utility water line and conflict with proposed roadway improvements with South Alabama Utilities for McDavid Road Grade Drain Base and Pave. This work will be installed by the Mobile County Road Contractor during the road project. Estimated cost to the county, Mobile County, is $60,132.29.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-two, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements for Track One in the amount of $1,0475, Track Three in the amount of $5,332, Track Four in the amount of $8,635 for Booth Town Road Grade Drain Base and Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-three, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Five in the amount of $599 for Pierce Creek Road Grade Drain Base and Pave.
So moved.
Second.
Fifty-four, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Five in the amount of $745 for High Mount Drive drainage improvements.
So moved.
Second.
And fifty-five, commission announcements and/or comments.
I think we are, will be moving into executive session here shortly. Um, we need to take, we need to poll the commission.
Commissioners.
I have an indig, I think we have a.
You do. We'll, we'll adjourn this to executive session, then you'll do your next meeting.
We do have an.
Indigent care board.
Yes, okay. Uh, then we will, we will recess this meeting into.
Executive session.
Executive session, but we need to go ahead in between and have our indigent care board meeting.
You want to go ahead and make the election for the executive session, then you don't have to come back and do it.
Why don't we do that?
Commissioners, I would ask that the commission consider going to executive session under the Alabama Open Meetings Act to discuss information regarding certain criminal investigations of persons who are not a public official. I would think certified appropriate reason to do so since the discussion would imperil effective law enforcement if disclosed outside of an executive session. And I think Sheriff Paul Birch, who is a law enforcement officer with certain authorities, would like to attest to that as well, if that's all right, Mr. Birch, and ask that his comments, which will affirm what I said, just be made part of the record. After he does that, I would estimate the executive session be approximately 45 minutes, though I never know, and be a roll call vote. It would recess executive session in a multipurpose room. Is that correct, Mr. Hides?
That is correct. The assembly room is the multipurpose room.
Okay, thank you. Good call.
Sheriff Paul Birch, Sheriff of Mobile County, Alabama, do hereby request that the Mobile County Commission enter into and conduct an executive session as the necessary discussion would imperil effective law enforcement if discussed outside of an executive session.
Thank you, Sheriff Birch. So with that, if there be a motion, second, roll call vote to go in executive session after you recess for the next meeting.
And also, joining us in executive session, in addition to Sheriff Birch and his staff, will be DA Keith Blackwood and members of his staff and team, County Administrator Glenn Hodge, and Eddie Kerr, Deputy Administrator, as well as Dana Foster Allen, our Finance Director.
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Aye.
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 Now, your executive session now. Motion to recess the meeting while you do the indigent care board.
Is there a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this meeting is now recessed, and we will move into our indigent care board meeting. That meeting is now called to order.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of February 27, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept a report from the Mobile County Commission of the Balance in Indigent Care Fund at February 28, 2023. Funds available: $216,498.91.
So moved.
Second.
And number three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And commissioners, just for the record, we're gonna, when you go into executive session, you'll adjourn from that and not come back.
Correct.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned from indigent care board meeting.